Okay, so call order at seven oh seven. Roll call please. Lucy Nolan Dilbert. Present. Chris Dilbert.
Present.
Craig Sims.
Present.
John Radzik.
Here.
Brad Pennell.
Present.
Tracy Makowski here. Rachel Witzit absent with notice. Okay, public hearings, we have none tonight. Approval of the agenda. Would like to ask that we remove... I didn't put those specifics that I put in the email. That we remove zero six three three two five two zero one two parcel C. Five eight, five eight zero Victoria. So that would leave us with five eight seven zero zero Roselle, five eight six eight zero Victoria, and five eight five two zero Victoria, yes.
Did you say, I think there will be first a number more?
Just, the one was never going to be on there.
Oh.
Which was, and then the one was, so I remove the second one as well after. So motion to approve the agenda, this is change of pace.
Ooh.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, public comments on agenda items, we have no public approval of the minutes from November 2nd, 2021. Did everybody receive those? Rachel? You did not? Okay, we'll make the motion. We'll see where God serves. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from November 2nd?
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes from November 2nd, as presented.
Any second?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, staying in voting.
She's abstaining, she can use her vote. Motion carried?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, motion carries. Yeah. Communication correspondence, we have none. Matters for consideration, all goodness. Zoning and rezoning. First parcel, if anybody needs more clarity, I did have Lori set up the overhead, and John's good with power pointing what properties we're specifically referring to. The first property is parcel zero six three three one zero three zero three five, five eight seven zero zero Roselle. Does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss about this property or any questions?
That one has been rezoned from light industrial to multi?
Light industrial to multifamily. Yes.
My comments would be the same on that. Years ago, it was multifamily, and then we rezoned it to light industrial, and nothing has happened with it. And in the meantime, since that change did happen, that area has been, I don't know, 10,000% better than it was back when. Homes that should have never, that should have been destroyed back there. I mean, it's all cleaned up really nicely over the past few years. I think it's a great spot for multifamily transition.
I would agree with part of that. With the exception is that, in reality, what's probability of that Roselle area ever being developed from multifamily? With the industrial cleanup that will be necessary, unpaid. It's, you know, on the Lennox side of Roselle, with the exception of a number of homes that have existed for 60, 70 years, the, as you get south toward 26, that whole area is small factory, small industrial, small light industrial. And even on the New Haven side with Basic and there's a couple small industrial, light industrial properties. I don't know.
I guess I would look at it more as, what if it does get developed as light industrial, and what does that do to the backyards of the homes that already exist there?
Backyards, the, backyard that face, are you talking about the home in the car, too?
Correct.
Yes.
I mean, it's a nice buffer to have a light industrial or to have the resident, sorry, multifamily there. You know, I know that some people, you know, have expressed concerns. To me personally, they like the field.
Sure.
But it's a nice field until it's not a field, and then when it becomes, you know, storage or whatever someone might put there as an industrial.
It's a...
Usage, I mean, it will be problematic for those people then.
I mean, it potentially could be a tricky one because the fact of the matter is that if someone was to develop that particular parcel for something light industrial, they would have to put in a lot.
Do you mind?
Okay. And, and with that being, I mean, that particular parcel goes all the way just, just close to Main Street.
Yeah.
Okay? There's, there's a street, I think it's Health Street on Main that goes back to that parcel. But I guess my, my comments are for the entirety of Roselle. Are we looking to make Roselle multifamily or just this particular parcel?
For me personally, it's this property. I mean, I feel that at this point in time, I mean, there's still the unsated problem, which is water and sewer and such, and well water.
Well, mine is also that, but what I do like about that parcel is the fact that it is so close to Main Street. And if we get some, some development of business onto Main Street, that's a whole lot of consumers that are in that direct neighborhood now that we don't have. And to make that property what we would like and dream of downtown to be, it needs rooftops in order to support it. And you said something about the clearing. This property was cleared by the DEQ, wasn't it? There's no remediation there, right?
No, that particular property, there isn't.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I remember back when it came up.
Further east, further south on, further south on Roselle, there will require some remediation for multifamily or single family.
Personally, I'm not looking down the street to look for any more residential. I agree 100%, at this point, even if they didn't even make the exit down to Roselle any more than an entrance and hidden would be good. But it would, it seems like a good place, especially if our thoughts are falling apart over in Victoria area, put more rooftops downtown.
That would be the perfect spot for it. You know, I mean, a complex that went from Roselle to Health Street.
And since there's no homes even on Health, that the entrance could really be off of Main Street onto Health.
Yeah.
And I don't know if the water capacity would, if they could tap to the main sewer, because obviously that's all new down there.
Well, yeah, the water would be a non-issue because there's, there's currently water going to sturdy grain. And if there was a project of that magnitude, of that size, the, the, the perfect direction would be to extend the sewer to Main just because of elevations.
Ah, okay. What kind of shape is the sewer in there on Main Street? That hasn't been replaced, obviously.
The sewer on Main Street, with the recent, in the last two years, we did a whole camera investigation, and the sewer on Main Street is in pretty good shape. And primarily because of the elevation, from the center of town by, say, Rose Center to Crossroads.
Yeah.
Park is four, there's approximately a 35-foot difference.
That's accurate. I've heard that before.
It's, because I lived on Main Street, and I remodeled my house, and I put a bathroom upstairs, and until the water mains were extended and upgraded, I had no pressure upstairs, so I know there's a definite elevation difference. And according to ADW, it was approximately 35 feet.
Okay.
So, so with a potential project of multifamily dumping their sewer on Main, and because of the, the flow.
Yeah.
You know, that, that sewer's in, in real good state.
So where does it go lower? I mean, I used to bike up and down it constantly, but that's 10 years ago, and I never really cared that I was, I didn't notice I was biking up 35 feet like maybe I am today.
You can feel the difference.
Okay?
Oh, yeah.
I never noticed it.
Oh, yeah, you feel it.
Yeah, I'm sure she's saying, all you have to do is...
Well, I bike, I come from that direction down so I can take advantage of the...
Really?
Boy, I can, nice cold stuff.
Okay, you never noticed it?
John?
Uh, check out the slide or something.
Sorry.
Check out the slide, go please.
Oh, sure.
Okay. So just quick context on light industrial development of this property. While leaving Calhoun, there's some discussions we've had, people approaching the village for new development, is oftentimes under the name of the stopper, is when you do let industrial, let it develop this whole area, that whole area, with a landform buffer and a whole lot of landscaping, which then really boosts the cost of like what it does. There's also a drain that goes across this property right there. And with the way that the drives and everything else work, you have to almost, we engineers turn the shit down in order to get a drive in there and everything else, be able to develop the land. And then stormwater, stormwater retention and anything else would require a good portion of this backlot to be used as stormwater. So your developable footprint really sure explains why the cost just like skyrocket. So as soon as those things get brought up, it ends up being a non-starter for those people who've kind of come to us for that. As well as just the fact that Roselle is salvage, it's dirt road. And some of the uses that we have that are permitted in light industrial will not allow a use to locate there if it's not off the primary or secondary road, and that's not. So, yeah, that issue too for being a barrier for redevelopment. So those are different factors to kind of think of. But I agree, like the rest of the southern part of Roselle, I wouldn't touch in terms of industrial, I think that's completely fine. Or some of the smaller part, if you were to do anything, that'd be your transition zone, and the rest can just be industrial.
If, with those difficulties and say someone put a PUD in there for multifamily, those areas would count as their natural 20% space, right? But it would be, it wouldn't affect residential in the same way because their density would increase.
Yeah, but essentially it's going to have a different buffering standard, it's going to have different landscape requirements, you can do a bunch of different things. The PUD would be sort of creatively kind of developing the site so you don't have the same standards.
So that could be their open nature areas within a...
There's definitely a reason to make your natural landscape area, stuff like that, but usually you can't just give a water space, it has to have trees and stuff like that to match it because your stormwater will be otherwise considered, like the retention base will be considered part of your natural open space, so.
Would that drain still be used if, if there's ever sewers put on Roselle, or would that drain basically be abandoned because of that?
It's a good question, it's a fine question for cement. Cement bill for...
It's a county drain.
It's a county drain, and I'm not sure how maybe preserved what capacity is. You could probably go to the KNS Village office to kind of talk about what would be allowed and what you do with that and how we maintain. But, yeah, I know the option is you could move it, but there's going to be standards of like what you need to preserve for well, or anything else.
That particular drain across the Roosevelt, it goes north and crosses Hart Street, and it consecrating two properties on 27, across from Main Street, and it exits ties in to the Roselle.
I was wondering where it goes, where does it go south of that? Where does it go south of that then?
South, it, it hits toward the railroad tracks.
Because when you say it, I know it now that you say it, where it is along Clark and...
Yeah, it, I mean, it's the Culver's on Main Street.
Anybody else, any questions? I have to do mental commonism, I'm 50/50. Because as John said, some limitations have come up for industrial use, but I also see limitations for multifamily because it's not easy accessible, not easily accessible. And if it's going to be multifamily with rental situations, let's say apartments, it's not easily accessible. You have to, you have to come up to town to go around to avoid the dirt road if that's what you chose to do. And if we're looking for a multifamily growth, say, to pick up off of the 26 mile corridor building up, I'm not sure, so I'm 50/50 on it.
I look at your negative as being a big positive because everybody would have to drive down Main Street. They would have to pass by our downtown in order to get home.
Right.
You know, you're forcing the traffic on that basis, especially if you eliminate it. If you didn't allow Roselle access, that would be all those heads that we need for business. I mean, that's our biggest problem, is we don't have heads here, we don't have business here. And you've got to have the heads here before you get the, and the traffic comes, before you can get anyone to put up business here, really.
And I don't disagree with that, but I also know that when you're on, when you're on Greyhound from work, you want to get home.
The shortest route.
The shortest route and accessibility is important. So like I said, that's 150/50 on it, doesn't, either way.
Hey, the multifamily development there would take a major investment, I would think that any prospective builder would love at least paying Roselle to that parcel. And, and probably is above the Health Street. Any sort of, you have two.
You have two, yeah, yeah. And the truth of the matter is, you know, the fire department may require that type of access anyway, so they may have to, you know, accessibility. But that would be great if somebody would come along and pay that, like, it's expensive.
But we'll say that also maybe help the county actually redoing the problem.
The county would, the county would contend on that as well, if one was guaranteed.
There's no reason for them to really do it now, but if there's heads and voters and complainers to...
And it, I mean, it's been basing it as is for, I mean, it's not moving as light industrial.
Yeah, I know, it was rezoned like in 2007.
Oh, that, that parcel right there was a major reason why our North Quidditch sewer debt and capacity was so high because that was counted as, I don't know, 500 people, or some... And so when the interceptor was, was being designed, they took that large parcel into consideration. Which I thought was wrong.
I guess that is, so one question, I mean, when we're looking at the big picture, is population. You know, can we sustain that type of population increase within our other, like, things that we don't even look at here, like our school district and, and our infrastructure?
Our own issue as far as, you know, our population. I mean, you know, we have a high school that has 350 kids, and it was designed for 700. And we have elementary school, Frank Lemon, that's empty.
Frank Lemon.
I mean, Seaford, Seaford.
Yeah.
Frank Lemon with the old school up here.
Yeah.
I'm just telling my... It doesn't exist anymore, I'm sorry, oh my god.
We just do this.
Sorry, Chris.
Okay. Please, listen up.
So whether it's the infrastructure, you know, weight and such on that type of population increase. So...
School needs it.
In that argument, that goes both ways, yeah.
I mean, what that would do is probably move the border from the school district farther in. Maybe they'd actually, you know, with that kind of population, they could, they're going to have to open Seaford soon, it sounds like, anyways.
Yeah. I mean, because it...
There's no room left in Denver.
One over here is as large as it seems.
Yeah, both elementary wings, I heard there's nothing left over at the, in Denver for elementary anymore. It used to be like a, oh, a whole baby, with the glass. Okay.
So, okay, what is your opinion?
Have we heard from the owner since he was here, what was it, Dilbert?
No.
He had some prospective buyers allegedly, so have we heard anything regarding that?
And Lori did make her best efforts, I had Lori contact everyone by phone to let them know that this meeting was taking place tonight, and their properties were beyond the agenda. Can we check what she did with this one? Oh, no, this one I believe she did have contacted, if they're helping the agenda. You know, and someone always has the opportunity to approach and ask for, you know, they come up with some creative plan, that they would have visual for the property, they can always come and ask for a rezoning too.
Sure.
So that's always an option.
Maybe this would open up their eyes to doing something differently too.
And this is, you know, although he's not here this evening, this is a recommendation to council. So... He can come back to council as well.
And my motion would be to approve the property at five eight seven hundred Roselle, parcel zero six dash three three dash one oh three dash zero three five to multifamily.
Second. Second.
Roll call? Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
John Radzik?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm not going in order, but it doesn't matter, for the record. Brad Pennell?
Yes.
Tracy Makowski, yes. And Lucy Nolan Dilbert?
Yes.
Emotion carried. And actually, could you repeat what the motion's stated? I'm sorry, did it include, did it include what we, the price number and what we were making it? Okay, I'm sorry, I missed. Yes, okay.
I'll be done and also read it.
Okay, great. B, so non-parcels, zero six three three two two six zero one eight, five eight six eight zero Victoria. This property is a property that they received a letter from, if you guys have that, from last month, the SHD. I will share, this is a property owner that Lori was not able to get in touch with, phone number provided on the letter.
That's the, the north part?
It's the north one, correct. Um, this is, the only contact information we had for this property was the phone number that was on the letter that was submitted to us last month, and that went and transferred over to another number, and there was no room for a message to be left or any means to leave notice there. So, and she's tried a couple times in the last couple weeks.
Not surprising.
So, but on the upside of that, they were made aware last month that this was taking place, and...
Can you highlight it on the, on the map there a little bit with your cursor or your light, please?
Which one is this one here?
It's the north one.
It's where the hall used to be, right? George's Hall?
Yes.
Yes, it's a one, I think it's a, is it a fencing or something down, do you know?
No, it's...
Fencing is gone.
I don't know what's there.
I don't know what, I don't know what they're...
Well, you can even tell from the area how cleaned up it was. I know that was one of Dan's big...
Accomplishments?
Yes.
They were supposed to put screen to kind of hide themselves from Timber, and they never, well, they planted some trees, but they planted the trees down by the creek.
It washed away.
So, does anybody have any questions on this property or concerns?
I mean, it looks amazing compared to what it used to, to look like.
And I think he will be able to continue to use it as is until the sale of the property, so.
But it moves us towards a goal.
Yes.
If they want to stop, my motion would be to move with it, but...
Any questions?
I'll say it until you guys start to feel how it feels.
I can put the motion on the table and then we can discuss.
Okay.
A motion to change from light industrial to residential. Property located...
Single, multi?
Single family.
You just said residential.
I'm sorry.
You got a problem.
Single family.
One or two?
One.
Thank you.
Um, at five eight six eight zero Victoria Street, parcel number, most important part, right? Zero six three three two two six zero one eight.
Single family two, right? Single family two, this is not a one, right, John?
Yes, I'm sorry. And...
I'm writing it.
I have to...
Okay, so is there a second for that motion?
Support.
Okay, questions on the motion?
That particular parcel, and are we sure that SHD are the owner of record?
They are on the...
Taxes?
Taxes, yes.
That doesn't mean you're owner of record.
We need to verify that because I, it was my understanding that at one point that parcel was also being sold on land contract. No, see, that's one of the disadvantages of living there still and all that, I seem to know already.
Is there a way to look that up, John? Well, the other, the south property that is on land contract and still with the same owner, at the same tax, the south property, the one that we're not discussing tonight, that is under land contract is under the owner's name. And I think it would remain until you own the property clear. I don't think your name is on them.
You know, I wouldn't think so.
You can change the taxes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you could be responsible for the taxes, and the taxes are coming to you and in your name, but to me, from a legal standpoint as far as the rest of the duties moves...
Yeah, as part of the agreement, you can have it.
Yeah.
Got it.
Because you can change the house from, you know, homesteaded to non-homesteaded.
Yes, you're right.
That process of assuming that responsibility and taxes.
Does anybody have...
The guy that owns it could still lose it if people didn't pay the taxes.
Right.
But they're shift of responsibility. Mr. Delbert, I'm glad you're so old and been around so long, isn't me how?
Up with that, I'm sad, Rob, really old.
Because it, it would understand that the property was being sold on land contract, and he defaulted on the contract. That's, you know, but I don't know if he's made good on that or what.
But the county will give, if you're the owner, if you own the land and I have a land contract with you that I'm not paying the taxes, the county will give you as the owner the opportunity to get the property back, so you will not lose it out from underneath you without your knowledge.
Oh, no, they'll go right to the, to that person even though they're not legally responsible anymore to get the money.
Correct, they give you the opportunity.
It's like, what do you call it, a cosigner on your taxes.
Yeah, right, right.
It's a way that operates.
So, well, this is a great question, because are we, what is our, what is our responsibility for due diligence? I'm trying, does anybody write on them, have a hard copy of the letter from last month? I didn't count it, I'm sorry.
But that probably isn't our responsibility, ours is what's all that one thing.
Diligence.
Right, that's what I'm wondering, I think that laying half-trip might be irrelevant in our, I don't want to say irrelevant, that negates it. Do you have that letter for us by your name? I think our due diligence is due to them. I mean, I don't believe it was mentioned in the letter that we received.
As a whole, not to individuals.
No, it didn't, no notification is done.
Oh, yeah, but I think we did that, and.
I guess the only question for bringing it up is, you know, to make sure that that if they aren't the owner, that the owner
What?
Had been notified.
Well, the owner would have been notified in the original process, and at the last month's meeting, the owner.
So if it was sold on land contract, it would have been George's, right?
Yeah.
George would have been the owner, if he sold it on land contract to this person.
Did it? No.
No.
No, it's on the other page, that's how much people were wrong.
Oh, I mean.
S D, S H D properties, parcel one.
Thank you. Okay, I'm just gonna read this out loud for everyone, we read it last month as well, but I do think, you know, if it's, if they are on land contract, they had an opportunity to make that statement.
They could be wrong.
Yeah, I think this was, you know, it was, I'm just gonna reread it out loud so that, uh, pass around. So, uh, dear chairperson, I am the managing member of the owner, owner land contract vendor of the above referenced property, please accept this letter in opposition to the proposed rezoning of this parcel to residential. For many years, this parcel and the surrounding parcels have been developed as industrial and the buildings are the, the nature that are appropriate for this use. I believe rezoning this parcel to single family or other residential zoning would greatly reduce its future value with very limited, if not negative, impact to the village. The parcel has a number of issues that would limit the ability to develop the property for residential use, including an insufficient access road for the increased population, possible wetland and drainage issues along the port parcel's border proximity to the very active railroad line and a large cell tower located directly adjacent to the parcel to the south. Additionally, the village's master plan calls for this area to remain industrial while other industrial areas located fronting twenty-six mile road are to be changed as available. So, we believe the best highest use for this parcel, again parcel, with some challenges for redevelopment to residential use would be for a term in industrial, so, I share that just to say.
Could you, could you read the first line?
Yeah, I heard laying half-trip.
Oh, I get it. Oh, yeah, did I write?
My name, because my.
Yeah, I read it and I didn't even. Okay, I am the managing member of the owner land contract vendor.
Yeah.
I read it out loud and, yeah, Denise did. Thank you, but.
I think that's, that's put, we need to clarify that.
So I guess, do we do with that?
Continue?
No, because this is one of the conversations that Sean and John are discussing, and I guess we have to figure that out, right? Um.
So you.
So your, your reservation is if the owner of the property that calls the land contract was notified, is that what?
Yes, yes.
But, I'm confused, wouldn't that be George?
I.
Well, George was not notified, my understanding, for this property this evening. This evening.
Oh, but he was.
Was not.
Because he spoke about this property at the meeting.
See, I'm not sure which property he spoke on, was he speaking on the cell phone property and the?
He spoke on a bunch of them.
So, you know, I mean, to, you know, keep ourselves out of some legal muddle jungle, let's, let's just be.
I agree.
Table at some point.
So, do you guys want to rescind your motion in your second?
Um, yeah.
Yes.
I, I change that to a table, if you support?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, um, we'll go roll call.
So, uh, Mr. Canal?
Um.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Dilbert?
Yes.
Uh, Lucy Nolan Dober?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Ms. Radzik?
Yes.
Uh, Tracy Bankowski, yes.
It's a table.
Thank you for hearing what I was reading. Okay, um, now we're moving on to parcel zero six three three two five two zero zero four, otherwise known as five eight five three zero Victoria Street.
This is the residential property.
This is the residential property.
That last, hold on. This is the real one.
And so, it, it is true, we're not affecting them as long as they live there, it's not affected until they sell it, or they, or they're saying.
And their usage there is residential.
It's a house, yeah.
Can you make that bigger, John? Please, thank you so much.
What can Seiford have?
I know it's not in me either.
It's good, we should have done that last one.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to change five eight five three zero to RM two, parcel number zero six three three two five two zero zero four.
Five eight three, five three zero Victoria.
Isn't that my son?
Kind of.
Five three zero?
Five eight five three zero?
Yeah.
I hope I did, because I told a little guy.
You just said Victoria.
Yeah, it's Victoria. Oh.
So, okay.
Do we have a second?
And it's going from.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second.
And it's going from.
Light industrial to single family two. Okay, any questions on this motion? Hello, roll call.
Um, Mr. Canal?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Tracy Bankowski, yes. John Radzik?
Yes.
Uh, Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
And Lucy Nolan Dober?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carried. Um, okay, that's it, so, um, we'll discuss our, we'll have John and Sean address the concerns on the three remaining parcels, and then we'll bring those back to the table next week.
If they do this at a meeting somewhere else, I'd like a little video live feed.
A live feed, I believe it was going to be a by phone.
It's gonna be a pay-per-view.
By phone, perhaps, I think, yeah, a Zoom.
It's a pay-per-view.
Pay-per-view, what's that?
I'd like a glass of wine at the same time.
If you're gonna take a whack to the face, you're gonna put like a little money in there. I like it.
Okay, so, um, moving on to just a brief update on the master plan from our planner. And where we're at. Thank you very much, John, for navigating that.
Okay, so, uh, brief update on the master plan. Um, I today officially finished the, the zoning plan, um, which is the last chapter of the master plan, and now our graphics person has all the chapters, and he is now translating, transposing those into a new graphic document. So, my target is for hopefully like the first week or two of January, um, to have a full graphic document done. Uh, with new photos, new everything, um, all the treatments and everything else, and that should be good to go after that, so.
Thank you, any questions? All right, moving on to the twenty twenty-two planning schedule, would everybody retrieve that?
Yes.
Rob had some concerns, he would like to know if we'd be interested in moving to July meeting.
The week before, or the Monday after, the week before would be June, but the Monday after would be before council, because council will be on the following Tuesday. I know for sure, I'm familiar with most of people's plans, I'm not really like me to have plans that far advanced, but, kind of cool.
So that July meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's currently, I think July third, or fifth, sorry.
Oh, getting it then.
Oh, it's Tuesday.
So if we were to move it to the first, or to the, um, the next Monday?
The eleventh.
The eleventh. Anybody have any thoughts on that, still before?
How's everyone else, how, how's everyone else as far as the fifth?
I'm in different, I'm out of town.
That's important, I mean, that's the, who can be here, so.
So you got two down?
I may be out of town, I don't know, yeah.
I mean, I can make myself out of town. So, we don't have a form, see?
Okay, so would, I guess my question is, would you prefer to move it forward, would you prefer to move it back? I don't, I think we move it back.
Mrs. Dilbert can pack on a flyer, right?
She keeps something packed all the time.
I need to go back.
So. July eleventh?
July twelve.
Yeah, why don't you move it to eleven, and.
If there's any need, if there's something pressing, um, that comes up, we can always do something at the end of June.
Yep, I agree.
Well, so we'll make a regular meeting July eleventh, if there's something pressing, we'll just call an extra meeting. Usually, we're pretty good, but it's July eleven.
And I didn't see anything happen immediately.
Okay, anybody else have any concerns about this schedule?
I'm too busy to open it, no, I'm, it's mine.
Okay, so, a motion with the changes?
A motion to amend the presented twenty twenty-two planning commission calendar to change July fifth to July eleventh. All others remain as presented.
Agreed.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Um, do you have anything else you'd like to share tonight, Sean? Good. Uh, public comments on non-dged items, do you want to speak at all?
Uh, yeah, um, right now, uh, we'd like to, um, discuss, um, the village.
Okay.
We have a flower shop doing great, okay? She retired, okay, bless her soul, okay? What can we do to bring people in, the village? We have a building that is damaged, Louis' building is damaged, it's broken windows, and, yeah, you come out there, I walk into the post office, the scene is on this outside, go around the other side, there's a damaged, um, window, they go about that bit. And.
If you call the village to let them know that that's.
I talk to people in here, and I talk to them, oh, we'll check it out, we'll check it out.
Okay.
No one checked it out, okay?
I will share with you, not making, right now, we're, I don't know when you came in, but we do have, um, we're, our code enforcement, we're currently seeking someone to fill the position, so it is very limited right now, I don't know when you came, not making.
Oh, no, I just.
But I agree with you.
I was talking, when I paid my water bill.
Okay.
And everything else.
Oh, sorry, could you state your name, please?
Okay.
Just.
Well, what I'm trying to say is, we gotta bring something back in the village.
Right, I agree.
What do we do? Tell me what you guys can help me bring into the village. Because I have tried to bring people, but the flower shop would do good, she's putting that up herself, okay? We have Louis here, but no one's keeping up with the building, okay? The guy who owned it before stripped the wires.
Nobody.
He stripped the wires and took a lot of stuff out of it, okay? And that's what I heard from a lot of people, okay? And what I want to do is, I'd like to bring the village back. Summertime, I'd like to see a flea market over here, if we can do that. Bring somebody to come down, bring it over to New Haven, I'd like to see something that all the people would enjoy, come out in the summertime to see and maybe use some, um, like you guys have right now, music, all right? You know, you know, whatever, but we gotta do something else to bring in the people from Chesterfield, Nice Township, Richmond, bring them all together as one group, one big family here, and just get them on. Can we suggest something? Can you get, do something together maybe, and we can all discuss it and see what we can do to bring more people into the village? And bring the population and the money into the village to help out people around here?
I think we all have the same desire as you do, um, and I know many people have tried, and unfortunately, many people have tried, and it just hasn't always been successful.
Right.
So, you know, for all different circumstances.
Right.
Um.
To, to your point, we did rezone some properties within the downtown area to residential, and that's what you need in order to get a business, you need people that are gonna shop it, you need heads, you need people.
Right.
So, we did, we're, we're trying to do some rezoning to increase our population in that downtown area to.
Right.
Make somebody come and want to, that's the hardest part, you gotta, they gotta have a reason to come, they can't sell their stuff to anybody.
Right.
And Mr. Dilbert, whatever, I know that we were planning, you know, we had that talk with the gentleman there with the, um, what do you call it, the, the storage barns.
Oh.
He was talking about a flea market at one time.
Chris, uh, Hopeback.
Yeah, that would have been a great flea market, uh, situation there.
I don't know whether it happened.
Yeah. There have been a lot of, um, investors, so to speak, who have done traffic studies, and they just don't reach the volume required for certain businesses to come here. And those, those studies have been done on aggression.
Because I see a lot of places building on, on aggression, I know it's a busy street, but is there a way that we can maybe give some, um, like a startup person or something, maybe a little tax break? Hey, we'll give you a, a certain percent tax break, to come on down here and, to New Haven, and put your stuff here.
We have, we have in the past done that.
Okay.
And the property is zoned downtown to have a DDA in it, so if someone's looking and they see DDA, that's what we like there, they have that ability to, you know, that we're welcoming it, you know what I mean?
I understand what you're saying, yeah, but there's really nothing down here anymore, like the gas station's gone, Louis is gone, like I said, the only thing that's down here right now is the post office, how long is the post office gonna stay there until they want to leave New Haven? If they don't make any profits or anything over there either, they gotta make a little bit of money too. I know it's a government, um, plan, but they have to make something to show that they have people still using that post office.
I don't think anyone up here disagrees with you, I think we all agree with you. Um, could I just get your name for the written, sir?
I'm sorry?
Your name?
Uh, Charles.
Charles?
Charles Petch.
Could you spell that?
C H R L E S, Petch. P is a paw, E T C H.
You live behind the post office, right?
No, I live behind that old church.
Old street.
On Elm Street.
Elm Street.
When they tore that church down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to see, if you guys would sell, I don't know who owns that property, I would like to know who owned the property and see if they were. Okay, because I wasn't sure if you were gonna sell the, um, property too. Because that house was, um, with the property before, before I bought it, that's why.
I know exactly who you are, you're just greater than you are.
Well, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you for coming, we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Call from the table?
Um, I thought I was.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, okay.
I'll do something quick.
Okay, could you state your name?
My, my name is Jonathan Petch. Uh, I was wondering, there's a property back over here by Point Island, and I was trying to see if you guys could make a strip mall, because I know, I graduated from New Haven High School, and I'm trying to have a community to come out and say, hey, we have a strip mall instead of going to Lakeside, because Lakeside is falling down, and I'm trying to be the community back and say, hey, this is my community that's shopping New Haven, this is what I want to see myself, because I graduated twenty fifteen from high school, and I want to make my passion to make New Haven, say, hey, I know Inglebait, Inglebait did not fall from New Haven, I want to bring the, bring the village back, it might take time, but if we can work it together as a team or family, look, everything combined together, I don't mind, but I was wanting like a little strip mall, kind of like Frank, bring it over here and, and say, hey, this is what we have with the rockets, this is what, this is what we can afford, we have a North Face or something that we can bring in, um, like a, um, Salvation Army, a dollar store in here, like Dollar Tree, yeah, people don't like the dollar store, but think about it, it's a community, this, community that we can take power of, yeah, it might be a dollar, a dollar twenty five for food, but think about it, food is food, but you have people traveling all the time, hey, this, I've got the dollar store, it's got some food, it's got some snack and food on the boat. That'd be cool, um, a silk bouquet or something that we can bring back to the community to, uh, look back to, hey, look at what we did, we have the strip malls, we have the community, plus, we can bring some, uh, restaurants in, like A and W, bring back.
bring back more of the, uh, back in the day, uh, stuff, not like the nasty food, bring some good stuff. Um, but find it like, not expensive, because when you think about expensive food, people don't have a mind for it. Um, you have to think about, okay, um, COVID's going on, um, the money's too tight. We have to find something that would help the community to, uh, raise, to raise, to raise the village up like a little bit more. Make everyone all feel happy and, uh, saying welcome to the village. That, that's my opinion.
How old are you?
I'm twenty-four.
And are you on social media?
Yes.
Okay, so are you on the village's Facebook page?
Yes.
I would strongly encourage you, when opportunities come up, and they'll be there and go to the website and go to there and get a seat, because I would love to have someone and see someone like you sitting somewhere where you can speak, because we really don't have your generation represented in these seats and I think it's great.
Yeah, because I really want to bring, it doesn't matter, it can't be a two-story mall, yeah, I understand the village can only afford so much. I understand with the comment phone, because you, village has to pay bills and so on and so forth and everyone has bills on the side, I understand with the comment phone. But like a little, kind of like a little thank you move, those strip malls, something not expensive, something that people can afford. That's all I'm thinking about, because we, if we get out of like the high school, where people want to go? Most people don't want to go to college, they don't have the money, or they just want to do their own thing. I can't judge people, I can't tell if they want to go to college or not, I just graduated twenty sixteen from college. So I just want to bring back the village as much as I can to bring people to say, hey, let's go shopping or let's go to the movies or let's do something that say, hey, let's go somewhere, it's quite a nice day or let's, let's do something else fun and family, just bring something back.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Happy to.
You too. Is that your dad? Yes. So the apple hasn't fallen far from the tree there, love of the village, that's great. No problem. That's great.
Okay, call from the table?
I only have one comment.
Sure.
And I'm going to direct it to these two gentlemen and everyone, that we just have to really support our local businesses.
I, I agree.
As number one, because if we don't, then we don't have a lot of outsiders coming in.
Well, and same with our events, I mean, we need to show up at events, we have, we need our reputation. We seem at those events.
We can tell you that Italian market's going to pay, bro.
I know, I know, I sometimes treat them to, even if they don't mean anything, I go there anyway, because I want them to stay.
I go there, get one thing and walk out with fifteen.
I know, I, it's actually guilty.
Yeah, I'm going to pick up, you know, this, then I go. Um, I have a few things, um, thank you for, both of you for coming. I have a question about, um, because I, I seen it in the paper. Um, the Lennox is putting a storage in front of Royal Run and next to Decora Park. Um, I was always under the impression that that was multifamily property, not, um, I would think industrial. Does anybody have any insights or ideas what, uh, what's going on there? Because that just doesn't seem like a great spot.
I saw it on Facebook at North Point or whatever.
Yeah.
And they have a huge facility further up, twenty-six mile road.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I know, I, I always say roads, because that's my, I'm like, I, I remember things like you remember here. But every half a mile, there is a stinking storage place on, on every half a mile corner. I mean, you want to tear out a beautiful church to put in, storage. I don't know who's putting, I think people must be living in that thing, because who's got that much stuff?
Lots of stuff to store.
It just amazes me how, and why, I mean, I imagine they're all having it for all the next few years, but.
That's many, isn't it?
Yes.
It just didn't make sense to me how that, uh, that dropped into that spot, so I was curious if anybody knew anything. Also, now that the census has been done, do we know what the, the C D B G tracks look like now for New Haven? Has that, has those numbers changed? I'm not sure, I, I will get to, like, see if I can get, um. I mean, I would be, yes, they probably did, but especially if you're, you know, you're spending three fifty on a little house.
There's a, um, there's a formula that you could use. I can't remember, how do you calculate that?
I did a search, but I didn't find anything. But I thought maybe you might have, maybe it's not something that's so out there is because it's newer data, maybe you have already did there.
Did you go on the census bureau website?
No, I went to a, to a blocked random site that I used to click on often and it didn't have anything updated to this past census. Um, but it also didn't seem like the most up-to-date site anymore either, you know what I mean? It just seemed old, that like maybe, you know, there's another site somewhere else. And that, uh, that's all I got, I feel like we did suck a bit today. I like that.
So, but just a quick question, the moratorium, how much longer is that?
I believe it's exhausted, you guys didn't renew it, did you?
No.
No, I don't.
Was it expiring?
It expired, no, I think it's done. I think it exhausted with our initial, it was carried over.
It was extended.
Yeah, it was carried over one time to November, right? So that we could do everything last month and then it was not carried over beyond.
Okay.
Chris, listen, I think, good? No?
I don't have a. Twenty-six inch, it probably certainly could look better.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
I don't think it looks much like the building when you approved it.
It does look, but that's. Uh, motion to adjourn?
So.
I know, I, I, I directed mine.
Oh. Second?
So Chris said yes and, um.
Motion.
Are you looking for a second?
Sure.
Rob's second.
All in favor.
Did you? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye, eight oh four. Thank you.